You can find some information in the back.
There might be more in the back.
All right, good.
There's some stuff in the back. They'll want a copy of that.
Good morning, Commissioners, and over to Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June 10th, 2024 Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Nafisa Fai, Commissioner Pam Trean, and Commissioner Roy Rodge, Commissioner Jerry Willey. I know, I just skipped a step because I was about to say, we're hoping Commissioner Roy Rogers will join us any time now. So, folks, for your roundtable packet today, we have a few updates, so we'll go through that. But welcome back, Ms. Angie. We hope you had a great couple of weeks away, really focused on ICMA business throughout the world. Please know that you have a terrific staff, and as far as I'm concerned, everything was smooth sailing. So either hit it very well, or it was indeed smooth sailing.
It is always smooth sailing.
Yeah, yeah, I hit it.
Well, there weren't any Catherine O'MeI moments. Let me put it that way. Okay, well, Topic 1 and Topic 2 are likely to merge in a little bit together. We don't usually go over the specifics of the roundtable, though we can certainly do that if you are interested in that. But please note that the July 23rd set of meetings has been canceled due to lack of a quorum. So staff and I have looked at adjustments. Some things moved up, some things moved out. Then in September, there were also some changes there, updates there. So I'm just going to sort of merge 1 and 2. I don't have any updates this roundtable. You know, sometimes we have some additional updates. So I'm going to refer everyone to this sheet. Oh, and sorry, for the table, since it's a new version, because I got new information. And you should have a copy of that already. This, I went through all the known Board of Commissioners availability. And I had to do this three times because some people didn't meet the deadline of the end of the day Tuesday. Not you, but I did the update anyway. Well, I will say ta-da. For you. So.
So all my vacations are canceled? Is that what?
No, not me. No way, not me. No, I am a firm believer in vacations. So we have a lot of work, travel, and vacations, because every one of us deserves to have a life, busy though it may be. So green means just one commissioner is out. Yellow means two commissioners are out. And pink, because I couldn't stand red, sorry Pam, red's her favorite color, is three or more commissioners are out. So you can see July 23rd has an X, and April 13th has an X.
August.
August. I have this thing about month names, and so I am grateful my colleagues helped me with months. So why is this important? Well, it's important not only for figuring out the rolling agendas of when we can meet, but as we all know, we need to work with experts on our county council search. So it may be faint on your copy, but I circled weeks, the Tuesdays in September and October and November. Commissioner Willie, I may be leaning into your offer of zooming in if needed in November. So, but beyond that, this is where we have a lot of work to do and not a lot of time. So that's, the whole purpose of this is a helpful resource.
And I, I just want to say the same thing, both in July and up in Toronto. If there's a meeting that we just can't schedule otherwise, I can certainly make time to zoom in. I think that that's, you know.
Well, we have, we will be meeting the 6th, and the 20th, and the 27th.
But if there's, I'm just saying, when I look at the red, I'm thinking during those times, I could, if we need to do something on top of the times that we have available, I'm just saying, I usually can zoom in as well.
Well, thank you, but all three of you are going to be at IWA, so. And Commissioner Rogers is going to be away, so I'm the only one that's actually here. And we'd have to not only have you zoom in, but somebody else. So, you know, those conferences are full immersive experiences, so have the full immersive experience. I support that. Not a problem. So it would really only be a super-duper challenge if we had multiple Pink Weeks, or Pink Tuesdays, or a lot of Yellow Tuesdays, because yellow means that two are out, so staff isn't getting the full Board as a group attention. So, so really, these, the rolling agenda and this work together, hopefully, when you review the rolling agenda, you're looking for those topics that are really big for us or that you're personally interested in. So. And I want to both thank staff for being clear in your email briefings, but also I know we got one recent, within the last couple of weeks on climate, that I've, I still have to work through. So watch out if you're sending email briefings with these colors, whoo, we may need, you know, don't expect us to get it read in a week. So. Before I go any further, any questions on roundtable items or anything staff, Ms. Angie, you want to highlight? Or, or, you know, Jack too, because Clean Water Services is in there.
Chair, you had brought up email briefings. As a practice moving forward during my weekly leadership updates, I will be mentioning if there will be a briefing coming, so that you, it would just draw your attention, because we all have a lot of emails in our inboxes to help manage your time. And if you see typically right now, you will not be receiving more than two per week. So we're trying to manage that cadence too of briefings, but the max would be about two per week.
Which makes me form a question for that offer of let us know if you need a real briefing, a meeting. Is that like within a two-week, is there a window there, or a time-sensitive timeframe?
If it's a time-sensitive email to, that I would be asking for your review, we would also make sure to flag that with your staff assistants, so that they can help make sure that that is at the top of your read box. But typically, the email briefings are not time-sensitive. They're more of just an information.
Alrighty. So I'm just going to keep going. Okay, also in your, in the roundtable packet is a document, word document titled BCC Flow of Business Summary. So I thought it would be useful to just have this list, because these are, did you find it? Is it? Okay. Because there are many annual things that get slotted into the rolling agenda. So we certainly have board committee coverage year-round, and there's also some that are in association with other agencies. So that's really the dictating coordination. We have our annual board, Farm Board meeting, the annual board jail inspection, our annual board and housing committee forum, the annual boards and commissions volunteer appreciation event, the annual review and contract update for our direct report, so county administrator, county council. And since this is a Washington County viewpoint, I didn't put the CWS CEO one in there. Every couple of years, at least, we review our committee assignments and rotations. And then there's the annual state of the county address, which is coming up on Thursday, June 20th. Be there or be square, unless you're overseas. Then we have normal business cycles that involve a lot of our direction and decision-making. The budget, certainly, and this is where we're on a cycle of in fiscal year Q2, we start getting forecasts, and through Q3, Q4, giving direction. Land use and transportation ordinances, including those city UGB concept and community plans, and then the state and federal legislative updates. Then we have what I call ad hoc work, whether they're groundbreakings or grand opening events or activities. We have a bunch of those with Capitol Road projects, housing solutions, Commissioner Community Engagement Solutions, such as town halls. We have levy development that's coming up now and into the next year. So, and just in case, trying to, I was afraid somebody would ask me what the tax rates were, so that's why I included those. So that's just a helpful resource. Good morning, Commissioner Rogers. So then there's the roundtable planning.
Oh, yeah, should I ask a question on the, on the BCC Flow of Business Summary? The other thing that comes to mind, and I know, I know you're looking at this from the perspective of the county.
Yep.
I'm thinking about the AOC District Meeting and Annual Meeting. And I don't know, I mean, it shows up on our, our round, you know, on our schedule through, through all that. But that's just one of those things that comes to mind, that especially that, I know the District 8 meeting is the one, maybe I'm just, the world's about me today, but maybe I just want to make sure everybody's at that.
So, you know, you're right, AOC is something very specific to us. But I thought the minute I start tapping into committees, where do you stop?
I, and that's why I said that to start out, I recognize.
Yeah, which is why I listed it over here. September 8th.
No, September 11th.
September 11th. Sorry, I knew I wrote that down. I wrote it down wrong twice. So, yep.
That's the AOC District 8 meeting, where we all come together.
It's not that, far in there.
No, that's.
There's another retreat on there.
Nafisa's out, that, that green bar, that's what that is.
Okay.
So that's when we invite the state legislators too. But we just got an email this morning with the final agenda for the AOC Ledge Day Retreat, and, you know, at first glance, I was like, oh, why does this sound like the annual retreat that's scheduled for September? When is that again? Is it 2020, yeah, it's 2021. It's right before Pizz. Yeah. Which is why I marked you and I out. That's right. I did put that in there. So, anyway, I filled out their survey and repeated again that it wasn't wise to schedule something on a board meeting Tuesday. Somehow you missed the circulation of the table before you. So now I'm going to move to the next thing, and this is where I haven't passed it out around the table yet. You have a copy of this in your packet, but I want to, can you pass it on to me?
Take the copy in.
There's copies in the back already. And copies for staff. So. Now I'm moving to what I call the long-term timeline sketch. So you may recall, back in October, after sitting through the, yet another problem-solving conversation at PSCC, I calculated how long would we likely be living through the persistent problems with the jail related to pre-trial release, the lack of public defenders, aid and assist, and it goes on. And so to illustrate everything, I included our budget years, state ledge years, and it was huge. Well, what I'm really just trying to focus on, I needed a resource that would help me on, what are the really big things on our plate that we, as a board, need to come together on? That's what this one pager is all about. So, starting from the top, we have received our first-ever Facilities Condition Index. So we are, I drew a pink line on mine, we're now into calendar 24, about to be in Q3, right? That's July. So that'll be fiscal year 25, quarter 1. So we received our first-ever Facility Condition Index, but that's going to need to be worked into our fiscal strategic planning and our capital improvement plan for '26. We are going to be receiving, let me see, I wanted to make sure I hit the major point. Yep, so these are the major programs for our attention. Facility Condition Index, we received at our work session recently. We had to develop a strategy to address, that's all TBD through the CIP '26. The Community Service Level Assessment, this will be another one of those first-ever things. Boy, we are, we are a first-ever board. So we need to expect that that's going to be an iterative process of, you know, what are we learning, how do we use that information, apply it, and then evolve from there. So that'll be pretty cool to go through, and that's in our work session schedule, though I forgot to write it in here for myself. Then for the CCI CPOs, we continue to rub up against the fact that the RNOs go back to 1986. So with Ms. Angie and Ms. Duke Dresen's help, we're planning on taking that portion of the RNO out and doing an update. It'll be an iterative process where we'll have an, just like with the strategic plan update, we'll have an early draft with board input, then a draft will go to the CCI CPOs and out to the public for comment. So you can see that that work starts in Q4 and goes out in time. But hopefully, that will establish a more modern footing and a better common understanding. Then we come down to libraries. So we've got affirmation on the schedule on that tomorrow. I'll say, looking at it, it's really strong, in my opinion. And then we've already looked at our, our time for programming of things. We're aiming for the November 25 ballot, which means that's November 4th ballot. So, you know, don't, there's no, think of it really as October is the deadline. So we'll need to refer that within the month of June at the latest. We have a lot of campaign work. So for libraries, Lisa's got really good work going on with governance, the service levels, the equity work. It's, it's really exciting work. But it's going to be just that work, intense work, thoughtful work. So, you know, following all of that, we've got work that will need to happen between January and June for the referral. And then for that campaign, it's going to be an intense campaign season from July through the end of October, really that, and really into September for fundraising. And while it's intense, we have really strong partners on the libraries. But that's going to need our attention. Then Public Safety Levy, this is where the really hard work comes in. We've got assessment work that needs to happen, and campaign work for the jail is really hard. And even though everyone in the county benefits, fundraising for a jail campaign isn't where a lot of people, actually, no, I'm getting ahead of myself. Fundraising for Public Safety Levy isn't where a lot of people put their mind. So the fundraising there is, is hard. But success is really vital. I remember one of the teams that worked for me at Intel really embraced, there was a movie, one of the Apollo movies, where success is, is vital, failure is not an option, and that's what we've got going on here. Then the Public Safety and Justice Capacity Study, this is probably our biggest area of work. We'll have continued work with the state legislature with regard to community corrections funding. But this jail and community corrections assessment is really important. And we got an email update from Erin Calvert on Friday, so be sure to look at that. What I reflected here is capturing the information, just as I did in October, capturing the June 30th, 2024, and April 2nd, 2024 work sessions, most recently on the work groups and the member charters. You remember this? So that's reflected here. But it's very painful, you know, planning this out, or this, this level of work, taking it out through construction. So no surprises, we knew this back in October, that it looks like if everything goes well, well, the county will be opening a new jail in the middle of 2030. 2030, 2025, 6, 7, 8, 9, wow. That's, that's a tough, hard reality. So what I tried to look at is how can we increase our rate of success? And our staffs are working on all the planning. I know I have terrific, high degree of confidence in them. I hope you do too. If not, we need to figure that out. But I've given a lot of thought to campaign cycles. And while I would love to go out on a May ballot, given the timing of things, I think we need to, in the near term, think about a November 26 ballot for jail funding. Because otherwise, if we go May of '26, I think is more aggressive than I, even I can get my brain around. Because we're going to have to have a high level of surety on the funding, the, the requirements, the construction costs. And if we don't aim for November 26, then we're off to a May 27 ballot. And while May elections are attractive from this standpoint of the people who vote in May are the ones who really care. They're not the ones who zoom in due to, you know, major political races. That, if you look at where May falls, it's right before that construction begins. So to me, that means you get, there's, you get the approval, but you still have to go through the bonding. So that, I figured, okay, I better illustrate this, which is why you see below, so I have the capital finance plan secured, that's the, what I call this aggressive one, and jail staffing needs to be factored in. So then I put in the alternative. Is it obvious? So. It pushes the jail out. And somehow, the idea of going out to 2023 just feels like a bridge too far. So. I'm not saying that, so this is just a recommendation from me, and I wanted to outline this for you so that we can come back to it while we're going through this planning process, the green planning process that's in progress. So I'm recommending we aim for November 26 in order to minimize the community and workforce pain until a new jail opens the middle of 2030. I know this is an aggressive schedule, and it does put the board in campaign mode two years in a row. But the alternative, you know, weighing the risks of a May 27 or a May 28 ballot pushes the pain out. And for our workforce, I think it's just too much. And for our community as well, you know, having the forced releases at the level that they are. having the forced releases at the level that they are. So that's, that's what I wanted to illustrate here is the major work, right? If we just focus on the, the board that we are today and going to be through the next couple of years. You don't have to look beyond twenty-seven. But those are the big, yeah, the big, biggest of things. We still have big work going on in other departments, and our rolling agenda helps us with that. Does that make sense? It doesn't make. Makes me stick to my stomach for the sense.
We can manage with.
Yeah, you know, I.
Major side, I think this is great.
This is wonderful.
Great snapshot, yeah.
But I might need some anxiety. Okay, well, that was a lot faster than I thought it might be.
While we're, while we're talking about that, you know, I don't, the courthouse down at the bottom.
Yep.
That's, that's another factor. But it's, it's dependent, obviously, about on funding and.
Yeah, but that's why I refuse. I might have, I might have planned that out in the October version, the wall version versus the single page.
I just, you know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna take an even larger cast of characters to plan. So hopefully we'll be successful through the twenty-five legislative session, though the funding may not come until the end of the biennium, right? We'll see. Or like in the case of, well, in, well, no, this is just the planning. This is the funding. I have to remind myself of that. You have to do the planning so that you can then go back. We have to secure the local matching, go back for state matching. Any other thoughts or questions? And remember, we need to take vacations in there too. Everybody does, all the employees do. Yes, we do important work, but we all get one life. Gotta, gotta support one another in having it.
If I could ask you or Tanya a question on, on bonding. I know I've had a couple of conversations with Greg about bonding opportunities to, we kind of have a, I guess, an idea of what things are possible that we could be looking at bonding. I know we've talked about capital projects at Fairgrounds, using some TLT money there. We've talked about a couple of other things. Is there, is there kind of a general plan as to what options, what varieties, I guess, alternatives that we have in that bonding picture?
Staff are currently working on that. You are correct. We do have the Fairgrounds Master Plan, which the board adopted in twenty nineteen. It didn't have a financing strategy. So one of the key aspects that we are working on, we needed the data point of the Facility Condition Index to be able to really look at what are the critical needs that we need to prioritize? And then what are in master plans that we should be going out for bonding? That could be part also of a conversation with a jail levy too. So more, more to come this fiscal year. And I think, yeah.
We've got MSTIP that we've created to do in as well. So I was, I was just, we're gonna put that picture together and it gets jumbled.
Our current full faith and credit obligations expire in thirty, no, twenty-six. We do have some, some capacity there. But through our CIP, right, our CIP, first comprehensive CIP from this year documents all the different master plans. So we have all that now. And the newest piece is that Facility Condition Index of all those other things that hadn't been looked at comprehensively. So that's why we have in that diagram, putting the facility, whatever. I can't find it now, but in there, in the top rows, is putting that Facility Condition Index into the CIP so that, that, that CIP and the fiscal, the financial strategy go together.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what I was asking, I just see that picture.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do there.
I, I agree. I'd like to see the overlay expirations and all those.
Well, you've got the expirations in the budget document already. Just look at the, that page.
I think that what, what I've heard is that ladderings and bonds to do a variety of things is what we're looking at. I'll wait to see that, what that laddering looks like.
Yeah, it's a long list, cause.
But this is really helping, looking from a project standpoint, combined with, you know, our fiscal opportunities. I think it gives us a clearer picture. Thank you.
You're welcome. And while in the October version, I also had the state-led sessions and the bud, budget work in there. For my own personal copy, I wrote a little B with a circle in each of those Q2s. Cause I needed the reminder for myself that not only does it take a lot of understanding the strategies and, and how are we implementing, but also for staff as well. Yeah. So one of the things I didn't see, thank you, Lisa.
I'm zooming in like you're late, you're not.
One of the things that I didn't see in the rolling agenda as I was laying it out here is the levy survey, survey development and having briefings on those. I don't know if that's in Q4 or not, but it didn't stand out to me in the current rolling agenda. So actually, I might have some other notes in there. For the most part. Yeah, watch out, September third, that's a day after a holiday weekend. I don't know about you, but those always bite me. Especially that, that particular day and month. It's like, oh, yes. I do have to admit that the month of September is here and I have to face the world to the end of the year. So, yeah, we got a lot of work. Any other comments or questions? Kevin will help us figure out, given the scope of work as the second half of the year continues, whether or not we'll need a December seventeenth meeting or not. And then we'll be a new board as of the start of the new year. So we'll have some additional learning sessions to program into our January, February, March schedules.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate Jason being here and getting this information. I hope you haven't changed your mind, it's too late, you know. So, but I think it's, it's good to hear this, all of us, so.
Well, the one thing I feel good about is with all the foundation building in all the other areas we've done this year and, and last year, we're in a much better situation of dealing with the realities than we have been the last couple of years. No more shoes, right? No more lifting of rocks.
Shoes aren't dropping anywhere.
Several, several of you have already requested, Tanya, no more rocks.
Just for a couple of weeks or months.
Yeah. No, I, if I can just comment, I just want to share appreciation to your board. Because with all the rocks or the problems that staff have brought forward, your board has truly embraced those and really evolved the service delivery here at Washington County, both for our internal services as well as our community-based services. So just on behalf of staff, thank you for your leadership.
You bet, well, you help us face sometimes the, well, no, you help us face the, the news, the data, and help us figure out options. While the decision-making may be hard, it's always quite thoughtful. And we couldn't ask for a better team to bring us the information we need to know and understand and chart a course forward. So moving on to another one of those, HR and HR transformation. Welcome, Lisa.
Well, as Lisa gets settled, some of you have requested just an overview of HR as we evolve and modernize our HR practice here. Lisa recently also gave a very similar presentation, not as in-depth, to ACRE, the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, and they really appreciated the approach that Lisa and the team are, are delivering in HR. So today's presentation will go a bit deeper into each of the business lines within HR and outline the current state and then future state. So where are we now and what are we moving towards? I just really appreciate Lisa's leadership. She has, and she, she will speak to this, restructured the department so that we will be positioning ourselves to a strategic thought partner with HR practice. So thank you, Lisa.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sure y'all can hear me well. Oh, good morning, Chair Commissioners. I am so excited to be here today to share HR transformation with you. I have a lot of information to get through and I realize I have an hour, so.
Okay, work through.
This is good, I was very, I was like, oh, good, running early. Because I think you'll, I, I, I'm hoping you'll enjoy and find useful the information I'm gonna share today. As Tanya said, I serve as the Chief Human Resources Officer here at Washington County. And it's a very comprehensive overview. And am I advancing my own slides? Excellent, okay. So we're gonna jump right in. And so the agenda looks simple, but it's a little more involved. So as Tanya mentioned, there's seven HR business lines. And so what I thought I would do is go through each business line and cover three areas within each, and then move on to the next. And those three areas are the current state, which is, you know, basically what's the function of this business line? What does it do? What is it intended to serve? Then the future state, how do we take the work we're doing and advance it? What are those future intentions? And then maybe draw some connections of how that future work ties into larger priorities around the county? And then also maybe some connections to some of the challenges that we're facing in HR and as a, as an organization. So I'd like to start with, again, a review of our department structure. You've seen this slide previously at the Budget Committee meetings. And so prior to my arrival, it was a flatter structure. It looked like there'd been some restructuring already done with managers over each of the seven different business lines. There was a vacancy in the Employee and Labor Relations line. And so I reclassified that to a Deputy Chief Human Resources Officer. And some intention there is to create that, that second level executive position to act in my stead when I'm absent, to have another strategic thought partner. And then also, without having a manager position, I was a little concerned about it having some direct reports in the Employee and Labor Relations Unit. So there's five senior HR business partners as individual contributors that report up through the deputy. But I thought then that additional focus is probably a good thing, considering the work that you'll see on slides in the future, the work that this team does to have that extra attention there. So the deputy is meant to cover that, that employee lifecycle from hiring with talent acquisition, moving into Employee and Labor Relations, and so the different types of applications of policies and contracts, like a collective bargaining agreements, and supporting managers throughout the county with the managing of their employees. And then learning and development. How do we develop our employees? How do we look into succession planning, grooming those future leaders? And making sure that employees have, you know, the knowledge, resources they need to do their work well. And so that's that side of the department. And then on the other side is kind of more of the nuts and bolts operational pieces, but also equally is important. Because at the, at the helm is classification and compensation. Everything result revolves in HR around classification, compensation, from job descriptions, job duties, the skills, knowledges, knowledge and abilities that, that is required to engage in those duties, physical requirements of a job, our pay structure. So performance, right? What, everything kind of ties into, into that. Benefits and leave, how do we remain competitive? How do we get the resources employees need for their benefits and leave? For all the protected leaves in, in the state of Oregon. Business Systems is more the data hub. So makes all the information go around in HR. And then risk management is more of a division within HR. And we'll talk about that. There's a lot of overlap in, in how it interacts with employees, but then it does have some external facing. So this is, I, I like the structure because it does kind of group the areas that make sense. But also I realize that with having managers over each of these, I'm very cognizant not to create our own silos by how we're structured from an organizational sense. So one of the things, and I don't have a, like a special slide or, or piece on this, but we've been having a lot of intentional conversations through our department and in our all-staff meetings so that the information still flows across and through the different business lines because there's often a lot of intersectionality when something comes in our door. And so, for instance, we recently did a no-wrong-door exercise in, at our HR meeting. So if, if someone calls Debbie Watkins because they've worked with her before and she's a familiar name in benefits around the county, but has, you know, a risk management issue, like how does she get that to risk management for that worker's comp claim, let's say? And make sure that that employee feels supported or that manager feels supported, even though it's not her area? And how do we each recognize in our different business lines? Because we have subject matter experts as opposed to generalists and understanding that that's a strength because we have solid experts in any given area. But it can also be a weakness because then you don't, you don't have those generalists that can, right? And so we're cognizant of this and we're working on ways where we can leverage our strengths and make sure we fill in the gaps where we see those weaknesses.
Lisa, just for a second on that. This is, this is a great graph because I think from my standpoint, I, I don't understand, had, didn't understand till this, all the pieces of HR and all the aspects that they have to deal with and things like that. So this is a great graph showing that. And then the second question is, do you plan on filling the HR Business Systems position?
Yeah, so I'm excited. It's, we're getting close to sending out an announcement, but we did engage in that recruitment process and we have a fabulous candidate coming down from the Seattle area who has, I was, needed three things out of this position because it's very key. One, they need, so we have the Workday ERP. And so this person will be assigned about fifty percent of their time. So I needed someone who had that, that, yeah, Workday, that systems knowledge and particularly with implementation. But also I need someone that has like an HR background. So someone like a generalist HR background that understands all functions and then a good leader for that group with all of the transition that they'll be going through in the next few years as a key part, those are the key functional team leads. So we've made an offer, they've accepted, backgrounds are clear. Just waiting for this person to make arrangements to move down here.
Well, and this is an area that I really came to appreciate more at Metro where with the business systems, we have a lot of hourly employees. So all the data, the systems that keep track of all of that and that our employees use. But also, she's, Lisa talked about the. But also, she's, Lisa talked about the classification and compensation. One thing that we have been very thoughtful in our tenure here is investing in learning and development so that our employees know they have career paths. Right? We're investing in our own workforce. We're building the existing workforce, bringing in new talent as well so that we, we can continue, the organization can continue to thrive and evolve over the course of time. And the business systems in HR really provide the foundation for all that workforce management. So, you know, just saying the Workday ERP just sounds like a brand, right? I, I need to remind myself of what that involves and the value of that.
Well, knowing what investment we're making in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's good that we have connectivity with that, so.
Yeah, and you'll, I have that thread throughout the presentation where we're going to see the benefits of Workday once it's implemented.
I have a question and a comment, Chair. My comment is Debbie Watkins is amazing. Really appreciated her service and her leadership in the areas of benefits, especially for me. And as a new Commissioner, that was my comment. And the question I have for you is significant organizations, large organizations as Washington County, I think the model of a business partner, HR business partner exists? I don't see that in this chart here. What can you walk us through?
Yes, thank you. And so these, these are broad level groupings here of the different functions. So on this org chart under Employee and Labor Relations, we have five senior HR business partners and that's, they're that work group. And so they're reporting directly to the Chief Human Resources Officer and they perform that function of working with employees and mostly managers on anything employment-related, personnels, personnel policy, performance management, discipline, those types of things. And then also, since we do have a unionized labor group here, they work on the, they focus on the collective bargaining agreements and applying those.
All right. I just have one comment. This is what I, this is kind of a traditional look at HR from my perspective. But I really want to emphasize the, that box, the classification and compensation. Without that piece, none of the others come together. And so I'm sure there's a lot of work that's associated with that piece. And I, I really appreciate the clarity that you bring to us in relationship to the structure, but also where the foundational legs are and how, how we have to attend to that. So thank you for that.
Yes, and that's an excellent comment. And if, I could probably do a whole presentation where you had a graphic of class comp in the middle and the spokes to all the different HR functions and spend an hour on that alone. Great, okay. So I'll move along with our first business line. And so talent acquisition. And so I, these are grouped even in the presentation, those that are reporting to the Deputy Director with that lifecycle. And then we'll move into the others. So the talent acquisition team partners and works with hiring manager teams at every stage of the recruitment and hiring process, from planning to fill a vacancy to posting, sourcing, screening, interviewing, the selection stage and to the offer. They provide guidance on best practice, policy and employment laws to ensure that each recruitment is equitable and compliant. When we look towards the future of talent acquisition, HR is evaluating its recruitment, selection and hiring process to ensure equity and efficiency. We're working together for a shared understanding. The team is aligning procedures to conform best practice and consistency with our work with departments. We are emphasizing a focus on customer service and increased collaboration with hiring teams and county departments. For our hiring managers and the interview panel participants, we are developing a more robust training on recruitment best practice, the common pitfalls you can find yourself in through the recruiting process and how they can attract their ideal candidate. We intend to move away from the passive recruitment practice. We're in the positions posted and the organization waits for applicants to come and apply. While that's still always a part of it and we'll always still do that, we're going to shift our focus to more active candidate sourcing efforts that includes a focus on equity, diversity and inclusion. And I'll speak a little bit more about that with how this connects, this work connects with the greater organizational objectives. Let's talk about, the team is considering options to actively source candidates to increase the diversity of our workforce that it serves to meet the objectives outlined in the county's equity, equity resolution. We plan to attend job fairs and post on job boards to actively pursue a diverse candidate pool. Of note, members of the talent acquisition team had a table at the recent Say Hey Partners and Diversity Event. And we'd like to improve our data accuracy, and this is where it's coming and tying into Workday and the new ERP. We'd like to better understand the discrepancies in candidate demographics at each phase of the recruitment. So I mentioned, you know, application screening process, like to selection and offer.
When do we lose them?
Yeah, when we start losing them or, yeah, exactly. And so look at that in comparison with our community demographics. And then that way we can find different sourcing methods to attract those diverse, diverse groups and then support them through the process and remove barriers. We're also intending to look at minimum qualifications of positions to remove arbitrary barriers to employment. Some of those examples include a candidate perhaps possesses the skills, knowledge and abilities that is needed to do the job, but they may have come up through non-traditional channels and therefore may not have the requisite years of experience or at levels of education that's in our job descriptions. So that could be a barrier. So this will be part of that classification compensation study I had previously mentioned. It ties in with talent acquisition initiatives. I'll talk in more depth later in the class comp section, but it will retain, any changes that we make will affect the recruitment process, so it's worth noting here.
I have a question on talent acquisition. When you're done, or?
Oh, okay. Yeah, got one more little blurb here and then I'll pause. So we're working on recruiting updated behavioral-based interview questions. So we have the question banks for hiring managers to select from, to develop interview questions for, for candidates. And we're also reference questions. So when we send out reference questions to employment references that are provided by candidates, we're looking at those through an EDI lens so that we focus and select candidates with, that have behavioral competencies that align with our organizational guiding principles. So we can ask questions about collaboration, accountability, integrity, you know, equity, diversity and inclusion, things like that. Commissioner Rogers?
I don't see anything there about offshoring. Have you even looked at that? Every industry, including my own, outside of this, is starting to move in that direction. You've got a small talented pool of people that are very expensive anymore. And so to be able to compensate those folks, you have to sit there and reduce costs elsewhere. And I, I know, and this might be interesting to you, Jerry, our accounting industry went from about, in the auditing area, went from about 6% offshoring to 40% today. And it's expanding with remote work being a preferred option for many people. Do you really care whether they're remote in Southeast Portland or in Southeast Asia? You don't. And so is that a part of your plan or is that just a, something is closed?
So I think there, so offshoring, I wasn't familiar with the term, so thank you for speaking more to it. That, in my mind, that has some organizational philosophical and aspects to it. Where, so there's, and I'm not saying, I'm not speaking for Washington County this part, but just from a broader context. Because this question does go around the HR circles. And so we're local government. And so are we going to employ people from our region and support and be part of that economic driver in the, in the region? That, that is one argument. The counter to that would be, as you had mentioned, it can shrink your candidate pool. You might not be pulling a more diverse, like broadly, right, nationally or otherwise. From an operational standpoint, to administer employment in multiple states, let alone different countries, is a massive undertaking. I have previous experience of this when we went fully remote and us being, you know, a borders, a border community. At my last organization, setting up employment just for Oregon and Washington where there's already quite a bit of parity and a lot of, I should say reciprocity is probably the better word. It took an additional FTE just for like, and we had to stand it up for a few handful of employees that wanted to telework fully remotely from the other side, a different state. And then you have the, just from payroll aspects, the different leave laws, the different, like paid benefits, workers' comp systems, workers' comp insurance. That's a really exhaustive list to administer that. And right now, even here, we have, if you look at our telework policy, there is a requirement that employees come in at least once a month. And that is just for the sole purpose that they don't lose their eligibility by not working enough hours in the state of Oregon to qualify for paid leave Oregon. Because then you get that poll, we may not qualify for either paid leave Oregon or Washington paid family medical leave. So that's the, the long roundabout answer. Lot of consideration.
No, I, I appreciate it. We've, we've tried other states too, and all of the things that you've said is, is problematic. Offshoring doesn't have any of those problems that you just said because they're, in essence, they're 1099 employees. You do it through an employment agency. And so it's a quick, easy way to do it. But it's a philosophy that this board, like, you know, be new after the year, but they need to look at. But with shrinking resources, costs accelerating.
So, so I don't agree with you that it's just a philosophical thing. Part of what we have learned in terms of returning back to work is that a lot of our work is collaborative work and that's part of the culture that we are developing here. Secondly, when you use offshoring and have 1099s, you are losing your long-term thought aspect of your employees. And that offshoring is great if you have set standard activities that essentially you want to contract with or if you don't have to have that long-term management of your workforce and the evolving of the business, which is very much the work of our local government. So this is, is very much a workforce management approach that I, I don't see us needing with all the other major things we have on our plate as needing to take that one on over these next few years. It's not just a philosophical, how do you approach getting the work done? It's what kind of organization do you want to build? How do you want to go about managing that workforce and the organization? What is the work that you need to do?
Isn't a good example the government relations of Washington County? They used to be outsourced, now they're insourced?
We used to contract.
Right, because I had one example.
Contracting is, is really different. Roy's, Roy's talking about contracting offshore. I guess the analogy for me, Roy, would be in the accounting industry, we can do that because we send them off a bunch of data that they compile and put into a report.
Any of our big employers are doing the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I think we'd have to probably find something that, a repetitive job. Yeah, where they, we just check the box. And then we could probably do that and probably the, the staff would say yahoo because I don't have to do that, it's boring. But, yeah, we'd, that's kind of what we'd have to be doing. I completely agree that that's an option that we all should be looking at when, when the opportunity occurs. But I don't know when that would be, so I would kick it over to you two and say, is there anything that we could possibly fit into that? If not, I don't. Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Oh, I did have something I wanted to raise. You were talking about the alternative experience. At least three of our board, two of my colleagues are familiar with my pushing for that as of 2019. And that was part, or is part of our equity resolution. So it's not something new for us to take on. But we've, we haven't had the right strategic thinkers, generalists and subject matter experts that we've needed until now to do the level of transformation that we need to put that in place across the board. But I, I also appreciate it's going to take a little bit more time given that class and comp is 20 years old and needs to be fully revamped.
We'll just wait, wait for that slide. Anticipation. All right, I'll move on to learning and development. And so in its current state, this business line creates a culture of continuous learning that enables county employees to develop new and cultivate existing skills for personal growth, higher team effectiveness, employee engagement, retention, satisfaction and even risk mitigation. This is achieved by, by developing learning content, facilitating learning experiences, serving as a training consultant to departments and work groups and acting as an administrator for our learning management system. So that's the electronic system that pushes out learning for asynchronous learning opportunities. So looking forward for this work group, we're working to create a structure around learning with a learning and development policy. So it'll identify roles and responsibilities related to employee learning and development. And we're also creating structure around identifying the types of learning, including what's considered a mandatory training and who is required to learn or required to take it. So now moving on to how this work connects to the larger county objectives, we're moving towards creating county-wide, county-wide training. Currently, we provide support to departments on a more ad hoc basis unless, unless it's one of those mandatory training topics I just mentioned where most of the county or all of the county employees have to, are required to take it. So with our finite resources and after listening to the recent proposed budget reductions to training and development lines in many of the departments across the county, we're shifting our priority to support departments in developing a leadership cohort-style training program. We'd like to groom our future and emerging leaders and bolster the skills of our seasoned leaders. And the cohort style will connect leaders across the organization with one another under that one Washington County philosophy. And we intend for it to align with the organizational values and develop those behavioral competencies that support our organizational structure.
Can you explain to me what your, what your criteria for a cohort might be?
Yes, and so, so this is all still like in the planning stage, right? We've got whiteboard sketches. And so a cohort will basically be leaders from across, across the county. So you may have someone from Economic and Development, someone from the Sheriff's Office, whoever it is that applies, but try to get a good cross-section. So you're not having people learning within like a learning bubble where, you know, the people they're familiar with, operations they're familiar with, but spanned it across the county.
And they, they apply, but they would be selected.
Yes, and so we're still working out those details.
But self-selection.
Right, and it could be through a learning development plan between an employee and their supervisor that they'd like to, you know, develop and enhance their leadership skills. It could be something that we want to move all of our, you know, certain level on up in the way of managers and supervisors in the county. And so we all have a common, shared understanding of what are our organizational values and how do we lead towards them? Or how do we lead employees towards them? Well, there's a lot of, a lot yet to, to thresh out there. But one of the things that we recognize is the value also that a strong supervisor plays in this. So, you know, there's a leader, right, that leads people. But then there's a supervisor and that's more nuts and bolts, I would say, of how, how to get the work done, how to manage the work and how, how do you manage employees? And so we intend to develop a supervisor track of training modules that teaches the nuts and bolts of being a supervisor, how to manage performance, leave requests, employees, how to manage them who are represented by unions and then kind of bake in there some of that leadership light that is based on that behavioral-based competencies that comprise an effective leader. So basically two different tracks and still sorting through the details of those. I don't know if the supervisor one will be cohort style or, or not, but there might be some value in exploring that.
Does, does this feed into the, the two slides before this? The new employee orientation is a new thing that's being implemented. And then the two trainings that you talked about sort of feed into the mandatory and county-wide learning?
So that's where mandatory will be, those compliance topics like discrimination, harassment and retaliation-free workplace. And those, those are required by the county administrator. They're not, they're not necessarily required by law, but it would behoove us to have everybody educated in those so we're not violating the law. But those would be required for all county staff. So that's more of a county-wide training, PIPA. PIPA, compliance training would be, you know, like another one, different safety topics for role-based, anyone's, you know, someone drives a tow motor, they need particular safety training, lockout, tagout for electricians, things like that. Those are more required and mandatory. These are more learning and growth tracks, and so how do we develop our employees? And how do we think about the future? How do we develop our leaders? We're seeing a lot of transition right now, and I think we've probably seen that in certain departments where you have that turnover, and then that leaves that, that gap, and we haven't developed someone to move up into that position successfully and to be effective in, in that role. And so people can promote themselves out of a job at times. That's a kind of a classic HR saying, and then, you know, the organization's like, what are we doing to identify those future leaders? And then years in advance start grooming them, so that when we have that retirement, we have someone in place.
It's also a key element of positive recruiting, I mean, to demonstrate that, that you, you learn as you grow here, bring on a services as well.
So is the new employee orientation process being standardized? It's not something that, because there's been, since I've been here, there's been tons of employees that's been hired, and I assume they get employee orientation, but you're, what you're talking about, the two slides before this, it's about standardizing and creating a bit of more structure.
Ah, I see where you're pointing at, thank you. Yes, and so new, I, I didn't speak to that in this presentation, but I can speak to it now. So there is new employee orientation, and what we're currently conducting is, you sign up for your benefits, and this is what your, you know, let's, let's get your, your badge and your access card. It's, it's really.
It sucks.
I'll say that. It's what, my question is, no, I've, I feel very fortunate that in my 40-plus-year professional career as an adult, I've worked at less than five places. This, in my experience, is the worst organization for new employee onboarding. And what I'm looking for is assurance that it's being reevaluated, and I'm speaking not just for what I experienced, but various support people in the CIO office. It's like, we give them a laundry list, get your badge, sign up for your benefits, do this, do that, here's the list, good luck, come back in a week. And it's like, there's nothing worse to squash your excitement about joining an organization than. So.
Go for it.
Now.
Yeah, and I mean, so you bring up valid points, because an employee's experience when they first come on the job within, you know, the first, the first day and first few months has an impact on their success and viability long-term. So the employee orientation I spoke of was more of those, you know, functional aspects of a new employee. The employee onboarding is that longer-term, like employee experience, I would describe it as, where, you know, it's really an event, and it's stretched out over six months. Again, it can be cohort-style, bringing in various leaders to talk about what the county does, what does it mean to be a, you know, public agency and a public servant? You know, what is the county? What is our, you know, our governance? Like, a lot of the things that someone who comes into the organization, organization doesn't understand, or how their, how their job ties to that, you know, that greater vision. Those are the things, yes, maybe within the five-year plan, but I am with you on, on that, and it is in the works, just isn't a focus right here and now. Got some other things we need to take care of too. Yeah.
I have one other question, if anybody else is on learning and development. Without understanding technology, in almost every industry, your days are very limited. So is that going to be centralized as well? And I understand that if you're a accessory, have certain skillsets, an accountant, you have certain skillsets, and you have certain skillsets, but there's certain skillsets of technology that transcend everything, and you need to understand to operate systems, particularly when your platforms are changing. Is that part of your department, or is that all on an individual basis by every supervisor, every department?
It depends. If you're talking like Microsoft Suite products, you know, like the gamut of, you know, Word, Excel, HR can, you know, contract with an agency or even just have the, it's available online now, and push that through our learning management system for immediate consumption at, at any point for an employee. If it's more role-based, like in Workday, when we get into Workday, this would be a really great example. There's different levels of users. You could be an end user, and so I think the county can support training and how, like job aids on how to navigate any particular task or function for an end user. But then you have the people that are working within the system, and Workday provides that training. We purchase training credits, and Workday has those catalogs where, you know, we go to them for. Within departments, if it's role-based, they have a lot of their own softwares that I, I don't, I think ITS probably might not even have a comprehensive list of all the softwares the county uses at this point, but it could be very specific to a function, like in, you know, permitting, for instance, and how to use those. But departments in the future of Workday, departments can create training, you can have a PowerPoint, record it, move through it, polish it, and then we can load it into our learning management system for departments to use for the onboarding and training of their new employees. So that is something I think we can currently do, I don't know how much, how much that we do that, but.
Very good job, I was just trying to, is there some base level that's given to every employee when they come in?
There, there is not.
Okay.
No.
So I need to come back to the new employee.
Yes.
Experience. Could you, so I'm approaching this from, I've made assumptions about a crummy experience. So what I would like to know, between you and Ms. Angie, describe a typical, the typical onboarding process that we use here in the organization now, not what you're trying to build in five years, but how are we making sure that, that new employee feels embraced, valued? What do they go through to understand the one Washington County approach, as well as the time that it takes to set up your new computer, get your, get your badge, your Trimate badge and all that? How do you, what, what's, what's your expectation of?
So Lisa is sharing from the HR perspective, there's also the responsibility of the departments too, and that's really where the experience comes in, because they're working the closest with the supervisor and their team. So it's a multi-prong, specifically to the question, the onboarding relative to who is Washington County? What is the organization that you're joining? Brianna Jackson conducts new employee orientation. The, one of the assistant county administrators, myself, attend those sessions, and so that's not just the nuts and bolts, like the laptop. I will say I'm incredibly proud actually of the increase, and I'll just speak specifically for the county administration office. Having technology in place when you arrive is incredibly important, of course, sometimes there's some snafus when things don't work right, but really that, that's the first nuts and bolts. But there's a full prep before, so employees are welcomed. For commissioners, members of the executive leadership team and county leadership team, we've also evolved our process, and Lisa can attest to this, so that there is clear department meet-and-greets, overview of departments, and we're looking in what Lisa is speaking, like, how do we accelerate that learning for employees at all levels of the organization so that you're not just hired in, in your silo? For example, in land use and transportation, you have a greater context. So scaling that organizational-wide is what Lisa said is going to take a bit, a bit more time, but we've made significant improvements. I will say it is much easier onboarding in person than going through, living through COVID and that virtual onboarding and having members feel connected to the mission and vision. So that's part of also, we need to make sure that all employees are connected to that.
Sounds like it's better. That's great.
It is, and, and so now it's the theme with HR too, is like creating the consistency, and so I think that's where we can make some, like additional future progress, is creating consistency around the county on that onboarding process, and that managers and supervisors all equally do as well with it, and employee has a similar experience.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so jumping into employee and labor relations. And so the core function of Employee and Labor Relations Team is to provide advice, guidance, and direction to employees, supervisors, and leaders on a wide range of employee relations and labor relations matters. They further build and maintain trusting relationships with employees, leaders, and union representatives. Some examples of their work include conducting investigations into allegations of workplace harassment, discrimination, and other misconduct. They help ensure that supervisors and managers understand their obligations and responsibilities, and to comply with the terms and conditions of labor agreements. They collaborate with departments to ensure fair, respectful, productive, and consistent management of staff. And looking in to the future of employee and labor relations, the senior HR business partners are working hard to develop trusting relationships with departments to, through pro, providing proactive rather than reactive support and collaboration. We're trying to be strategic partners with them. Departments have been excellent in this, and they are very open to HR guidance, but we recognize also that we need to build trust with them, and we must earn it through ensuring that we're bringing forward sound advice and options. And to that end, we are, and will continue to standardize and document our processes, review and update policies, listen and learn to understand the needs of the departments, and try to find a pathway to yes, and if it's still, if it's no, then explain the why behind it so that they have that understanding. Now diving into how this connects to the larger organization and our objectives. HR is supposed to review and update its policies on a regular basis, and we've not been able to do that on a consistent basis for a myriad of reasons, but we plan to engage in that work with intention moving forward. We will address the most frequented policies first, along with the ones that we are seeing impacts due to legislative changes, and you'll see that in a protected leave that I'll speak to in, in a few moments.
Could you repeat that first category, most frequently what?
Yeah, frequently used, I'll say, and so that will probably be more on the performance and discipline, policies, the, you know, discourteous treatment, you know, the discrimination, harassment, the 301 policies, one that comes up a lot, some of those where we see a lot of application of the policy most frequently.
Yeah, I, I was particularly looking or wanting through this presentation to address something that Ms. Angie sensitized me to, and that is that a lot of our personnel policies, even though they say it will be revisited within the next three years, haven't. So that's why I was trying to get in with what your approach is to that larger problem. Thank you.
Yeah, part of what Lisa and the team will be working on too is how the policies have evolved. They are so interconnected too, and so decoupling to make sure that they're not interconnected, because if you make one change, then there's a whole domino effect. So Lisa's been doing some thinking on that, because we don't want to be in a place that we update a policy and then leave outdated language and other policies.
Okay, thank you.
And along that line, I just, and you may be getting to it at a different point, is I'd like to understand how civil rights works together with this policy structure.
Yeah, I, I don't have that in the presentation, so I'll, I'll address that now. So with Daniel Ledesma, the assistant county administrator, we've been working with OEICE, and, and just last week had an exercise where we're examining what falls under OEICE's purview, what falls under HR's purview, and that intersection, and how do we work together? So, yeah, we're making some really good progress there to have that clarity, and, and then when something comes in the door, again, it's like that no wrong door concept, and then make sure that someone feels supported, and that it's a kind of a continuum as opposed to, you know, chucking over to the fence at someone. It's not the best experience. Great, and then we'll be looking at policies also that have like known gaps or lack of clarity. Sometimes you read a policy that was written five years ago, and you're like, what does that mean? So there, we do have that every once in a while. So as we update our policies and procedures, we intend to do so through an employee lens. And what I mean by that is that the policy will still conform to laws, regulations, best practice, but it'll take in the consideration, the impact to an employee. And while looking through that lens might not actually change the, the content of the policy, because often they're quite regulatory, we will, we'll know what those impacts are, how to communicate them to employees, we can mitigate them where we can or soften it, and then make sure that where we need to, that the policy is transparent and that the employee will understand what the policy means and how it's applied. An example of the work, again, is what we're doing with our discrimination harassment and retaliation-free workplace policy, and we're working on some procedures and information that we send to an employee so that if they're part of an investigation process, they understand what that means, what their role is, and so they don't have the stress of the, of the unknown.
So it moves it from being just a bunch of words to an actual tool.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Lisa, speaking of words, I know you used HR business partners a lot here, but when, and I know there's the previous slide in the beginning with the org charts, there was underneath like HR business partners, but I think, how do, how do people connect? If I was reading this PowerPoint, like business relations without referring back to it, and I think that's what I was trying to bubble up earlier, how do we know that employee and labor relations is actually talking about business, HR business partners? I know you said it just in your talking right now multiple times, HR business partners is what we're talking about, but how do we bump, like, community members reviewing this? How do they connect?
Aren't the HR business partners the HR folks that have that connection with departments? It's internal language.
Yes, and, and so it is advertised internally so that the, the organization would know. I think, I'm, I'm trying to think of an occasion where a community member might need to, to reach an HR business partner, and I would think it would be maybe on discrimination harassment allegations that might come forward of someone that's public-facing, and maybe, you know, a customer or, you know, someone in the community might feel like one of our staff members is, you know, discriminating against them, and there are channels and complaint forums, I think on our external website for, for that. Ultimately, it would come into an HR business partner, but really the focus is in getting that information to HR or someone, you know, internally. But we do have, I forget what staff calls it, but we do have a sheet that outlines for each department who their HR business partner is, and we have that on our internet and on horizons.
We use the same language with our legal team. They have their legal business partners.
Hey, so this group also, as I mentioned, works out with our, with our labor groups, and so in the labor relations area, we're making some improvements to our collective bargaining process. We recently developed a costing spreadsheet, which will be refined and developed to include additional analysis on economic impacts of the agreements that we enter into on unions. So there could be, you know, as broad as COLA, which is what our spreadsheet is showing now, the overtime impacts, if you have a differential pay or on-call pay, taking a look at when you're negotiating something, what is the actual cost impact to the organization? And that helps us inform.
One thing that was a new learning with having a new board majority in 2019 is the old practice was you come to the board after a collective bargaining proposal was formed and expect us to bless it. And the system that we put in place, and hopefully you're familiar with, is before you enter into bargaining, come and have the conversation with the board and scope out areas that we may be aware of or sensitive to, and then go through that process, check, check in at some point during that process, and then when there is that agreement, come again.
Yes, and so we do have two contracts that are currently open, and so some of these new processes that we're implementing, you might see them actually very soon, maybe even next week.
I kind of noticed that in the rolling agenda.
I want to assure the board that Lisa is aware of the board's expectations, working through negotiations, yeah, so.
Yeah, and so in the financial annual aspect of it, and so we include the financial analysts within the departments, they have a closer touch on the department budget, but also central budget as well for that, that broader budgeting aspect. In addition, we're taking a more holistic approach to bargaining, which is what you're speaking to, Chair, and we are engaging in strategy meetings with executive leadership, looking at contracts, not within a vacuum, but rather in terms of how one agreement might have broader impacts to the organization or other contracts that, that exist here at the county.
Awesome.
Yeah, and we will create consistency in our approach and philosophy to bargaining too, so it looks, we're having a similar process with. So it looks, we're having a similar process with, in between the different contracts.
Yeah, one of the skill set areas we needed in HR is to boost up our labor relations expertise, and so Lisa comes with that expertise as well as the Deputy Director Brian Light. So I'm really happy to have that on the team, because that was a missing link.
All right, moving on to benefits and leaves, so now we're getting into the work groups that report to myself, the Chief Human Resources Officer. And the benefits team in its current state procures, maintains, and administers all of the health and wellness programs for the county, including healthcare insurance, dental vision plans, wellness, and the employee assistance program. The leave team develops and maintains and applies all of the protected leave and ADA programs for the county. And so that's for employees ADA for the employees, and that gets back to civil rights, then if it's for a community member, that would be more in the civil rights arena. Oregon is a very employee supportive state with numerous protections for employees for their own health issues and for those for their families, and family is very broadly defined in the state of Oregon. The more recent legislative changes center on paid leave Oregon, we call that PLO because we love acronyms, which is evolving. And so we're going to be seeing the sun setting of the Oregon Family Leave Act or OFLA, and those protections are going to be moved over and covered under paid leave Oregon. So that paid leave Oregon has both like the protected time away from work, but then also the paid, you know, the paid leave aspect. And so we're, we're going through that, that shuffle right now, and those changes are keeping HR very busy with policy updates and then also employee communication, so they understand the impacts, especially for those that are, you know, planning on, on leave in the future and how, how their time might be impacted and the amount of time they might have to take. So in the future state, the benefits team is focusing on industry trends and cost drivers to offer benefits that are important to employees, and this includes the evaluation of plan usage, staff education, and a holistic review of our benefits. We intend on building on our current wellness program to support employee well-being. We offer different trainings to support employee physical and mental health. We're going to be looking to recruit wellness champions in departments. We see that like with sustainability and with safety, there's, you know, the different wellness, different champions that help push out materials and support, garner support within departments. We also intend to offer and highlight the benefits for staff on our employee assistance program. We switched the canopy a while back, and it has such a robust offering of benefits. I think employees are really surprised, you know, I think there's the, I guess, stereotypical view of the AP that it's like just counseling. While very, very important, I don't want to say just counseling in that aspect, but there, it's, it's not limited to counseling. You can get pet insurance and, you know, elder, you know, elder care advice and things like that. So on a really exciting front is that you're probably familiar with us offering our wellness or our benefits fair around open enrollment every year. It's very focused on the different benefit offerings. So this year, for the first time, I don't know if it's ever, or in a really long while, probably a really long while, maybe before the pandemic, we're going to be having a wellness fair. So it's, it's next month in July. This is a sneak peek, you're on the inside track here with this information because it's not been published, but we're going to have a travel themed focus, and our benefits vendors will be present. We're going to focus on like staying healthy to enjoy your retirement and have a long life. And so we're going to be partnering with agency vendors on bike safety, donating blood, emergency management, immunization, parks, personal safety, and more. So that team does a really good job with engaging employees, and it's really fun, but important, important information. And the county's investment in employee health and wellness was recognized just last week through the Portland Business Journal, wherein the county was awarded second place as the 2024 Healthiest Employer for Organizations with 1,500 to 4,999 employees. Last year we were six. So Lain County. Yay, Lain County, they do a great job. But yeah, to get there, we were talking about, how do we get to first?
Wow, you moved us four places. That's wonderful.
Yeah, and I think it was the really intentional work that staff did, and they leaned on our vendors as well to help, like how, how do you develop the, your submittal materials? And to make sure that we're checking all the boxes, like we even had provided some things we didn't know we did, but you have to look for them sometimes in our, in our information. And so staff attended that ceremony last week. We were presented with a plaque, so keep your eyes open, this is another inside track, you're the first to know, but we're working on a press release with, with Julie up in comms. The leave administration team will continue to build department relationships to provide that education I was speaking of for managers, supervisors, and staff on medical leaves and ADA claims, and with respect to the changes to paid leave Oregon. And we're going to be looking at usage as well, because, you know, it's a, it's a good benefit for employees, but it also takes, you know, it's longer times for employees to be away from work. And while that's a good thing for employees so they can take care of themselves, it also has operational impacts. So it's good to know what the usage is. So I'm going to spend some time on, on benefits with connections here, because insurance premiums is really the crucial topic of the conversation currently. We met with our brokers last week for early indications on our renewal, and while our claim experience is tracking slightly better than last year, things are looking a little bit better, the national trends are still impacting healthcare costs across the nation. So we're expecting, now I say this with early indicators, right? This is the first snapshot, so don't get too worried. But the information that we received from our brokers is we're expected to see double-digit increases again on both Providence and Kaiser. And so we're looking at ways to reduce the overall costs. These mitigation measures usually involve passing costs on to employee in some manner. So for instance, through increased deductibles and other out-of-pocket expenses, and at a minimum through premiums, because we do do a, you know, a share between the employer and the employee. And this is where the tension lies. It's like, who bears that cost is kind of the questions we're navigating. What impact does that cost split have on each? And so for the county, it's through our budget, and on employees, it minimizes what the COLA feels like. I mean, honestly, if you think about it, with the proposed budget of 4.1% COLA increase for employees, doesn't feel like that when there's more out-of-pocket costs going out towards healthcare. And so recognizing this tension, we're exploring ways to reduce costs. And like I said, it's too early in the process to share any substantive details about policy or plan changes. At a minimum, we're going to start with some work with employees, again, about educating them and providing resources and how they can stretch their own healthcare dollar and make smart healthcare choices, utilizing saving programs, you know, they have like this pharmacy coupon programs and things like that. But if you're not aware of them, you don't know to utilize them.
I wouldn't mind paying to increase costs if they would reduce the time to get to see a doctor under three months.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm setting, I'm setting in my second month, I still have a month to go, and that was three months to get to that starting point, so I'm six months into it, so.
Dr. Marni.
Yeah, Marni's even worse, so yeah. They're going to, they're going to increase their service with their prices.
Yeah. And it has that compounding effect then too, because we're still seeing that, you know, delayed treatment and COVID is having the impacts now of, of more severe type medical conditions that were unaddressed, and then you have the compounding problem if you're not getting in. We're seeing that with dental too, you know, longer wait times, particularly on the Kaiser plan. And so when we see, and then we're seeing that we're tracking over 100% in our, you know, loss ratio, and so we were kind of adjusting, but not after our meeting last week, we're like, was it because people can't get into the dentist, and you're waiting three months or six months to get in, and then, you know, it's worse because you're not doing that preventative work. But yeah, so it's, it's a, it's definitely a cycle right now. And it's hard because you are, you know, it, it's a lot of factors outside the county that we can't control, so we're trying our best to control what we can. Okay, now we're moving on to class comp. So classification and compensation, as we discussed, is at the center of HR, intersecting in some manner and degree with all the other functions in HR. In kind of like a high level snapshot, it classifies the county's jobs, which is basically you're grouping together jobs that have similar essential functions and which require similar skills, knowledge, and abilities. Classifications are the foundation of determining job duties, chain of command, decision-making, organizational structure, and pay. Class comp makes recommendations on the county's pay structures by determining pay for the work that a position performs, and it develops strategies to remain competitive in the county's relevant candidate market. As we look towards our future state, as I stated before, and we've discussed, the county hasn't conducted a full class comp study, I'm told in 20 years. Best practice is to conduct a full study where you look at every classification every five years and do a benchmark maybe every two years. So a benchmark is an abbreviated study where you kind of group together and have like a benchmark, and then similar positions, and you tie them all together. But it's a good way to kind of have that mid-cycle check, just to make sure you're tracking, so in five years, you're not completely off, you know. So less, less to correct, you can make little, little corrections holistically on a regular basis. And so we plan on conducting that full study, starting in the 24 or five fiscal year. And alongside of that, the county doesn't have job descriptions that align with best practice. So we have classification specifications, we call them class specs. They're supposed to be like a broader statement of the work that a classification performs. Ours are more detailed than they should be, and so I think they seemingly serve as a job description right now. And, but they don't have everything a job description needs, so we're kind of stuck in this middle, middle piece here. And so while this method may have worked for the county in the past, it may have been effective, it's no longer effective for us currently, and in fact, it's creating challenges in administering our pay plan, evaluating like duty assignments, accommodating employees under ADA. And so as a part of the class comp study, we plan to provide job descriptions, at least updated ones or newly created ones for all county positions. And so this is a significant undertaking. I would say this is probably bigger than conducting the actual classification compensation study, and we'll need to work with departments and garner their support, because it's going to be a big lift for them as well. They're closest to the work, and employees will be a part of this process as well, because they are the closest to the work.
So just give me a grounding of some kind. We have 2,600 employees around. Hopefully, we don't have 2,600.
No, no, you, no, so you look at, you can do some real big groupings right off, right off the cuff, and so if you look at the sheriff's office, so you have how many, 200 deputies? And then?
Jail versus.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, so you can, you can do some broad, broad groupings, and they'll probably have very similar job descriptions, and that's, there is some balance of, with job descriptions too, you don't want to get too granular into tasks, right? You just want it to, them to outline.
Then you have the difference between a sergeant versus a corporal versus lieutenant versus line deputy.
Yeah, and then some of the job descriptions, when you have, we don't have job families clearly identified here, so that would be a, you know, like an analyst would be a good job family. You can pick a department if, if the subject matter of the type of work they do matters. And so you would have an analyst, two senior analysts, and then maybe the supervisor, you know, within a work group, so maybe like payroll, that might be a good one. So you have payroll analyst, payroll supervisor, maybe two levels of analysts or payroll, whatever they're called. So that job family, you can easily write job descriptions, because it's just levels of complexity, right? And so, yes, while there will be a lot of unique job descriptions, there is some, I guess, order to it that simplifies it a little bit.
Just speaking about job families makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I have a question about the, the entire study. In, in light of our earlier discussion about any other shoes dropping or rocks being overturned, do you have concerns about any big surprises out of this? Oh, there will be lots.
Yes.
We lifted up the rock.
Yeah, so, yeah, so now it's like when you dig under the rock, exactly what's going to come out in that dirt.
We're the potato bugs. Or just which kind of bugs?
Well, and so I think that's like a perfect segue here into the, the connections, because the connections here really are going to speak more to some of the challenges I think we're going to see, that we are seeing, and we're hoping that the study will highlight, give us some clarity, and that we can find a path forward. So forgive me for a moment, because I think in order for you to understand better what the challenges are, that I might give you like a little bit of understanding of what a pay plan is and how it's supposed to be structured and what it's supposed to do. So a pay plan is an established set of salary grades and pay ranges that are used to establish pay. A good pay plan will have a, a range span between like the minimum, like the entry level to the maximum where an employee tops out, that recognizes an employee's experience as they enter the range, but then allows for room for growth as they become experts, right? So year after year is become more experienced. Then at some point you top out, and then the conversation changes, like you've, you're an expert at it, so we're not paying merit based on your expertise, but then the conversation changes to longevity, right? You're here, you're an expert in your field, but now you've been here for 10 years, now what? And. So I have to, I have to look, we have different contracts, and then we have like the non-rep, but I'm still sorting through our pay plan, so I don't know what the differential between minimum and maximum is, but I hear it varies. And, and it should, because depending on the complexity of the work, it could take an employee five years to become an expert, and in others it could take longer, but those are conversations for a study. Yeah, and it's kind of a philosophy too, some organizations, it's just the same for everyone. So the individual ranges should have differentials between the ranges that allows for separation between classifications to recognize the difference in the complexity of the work, especially within a job family, right? So you have an analyst one, analyst two, and a supervisor, so you want particular like rightful differentials to recognize that different experience, and then, you know, the expertise that takes to perform the work. And then the pay plan should also have parity between jobs like across the county. And so sometimes that's a kind of a philosophical tie that you create where you tie positions together, because you, as an organization, you value them equally, even though the market might bear different price points for their salaries, but you might elevate one because, you know, to create parity with another one in another, another department in the county. And so with that, let's see, yes, parity. So the county's pay plan, getting into what, some of the things that we're seeing, is showing some breakdown in some of these areas. Direct report salaries are creeping up on supervisor salaries, and so that's called compression. We see that particularly in the unionized environment, where negotiating contracts outside of maybe what COLA bears each year for non-reps. And some of the areas are showing disparity amongst positions where there should be parity. And we're also seeing some with our classification reclassification process, so a supervisor can come forward and say, the work has changed for this classification, it's become more complex, and so therefore it warrants reclassification review and a higher rate of pay. We've been using that as a Band-Aid in some instances where an employee, because of our shrinking workforce and the increasing workload, that employees are working harder, and they're working more, and they have more to do, and so it's a way to reward them for more work, but doesn't really, it's really not the purpose of a reclassification. And so I think that's because of some, and that's what I'm hoping the study will show, because right now it's all anecdotal, and it's what we're, we're thinking is happening, but it's a way, it's a way to compensate employees, to retain them. And so compensation, compensation is based on the county's relevant market. We usually establish these by looking at other public agencies with similar operations, population assessed value, greater general metropolitan area, et cetera. Currently, the county looks to be at the median of the market, so I guess a short way of saying you just add up all the, all your comps and average it, make it the median, however you calculate that. In some areas, we believe we may be behind the market, and others, we might be ahead of the market. And so this exacerbates the issues with compressions and disparity with pay across the county. Over the years, the county has been creating these ad hoc fixes, so something bubbles up, someone files a complaint, you know, something comes forward to HR, and so we've been kind of dousing the little fires and not handling, you know, the, the big one. And it's just compounding the long-term challenges and impacts across the organization. So the fix, so we're hoping that we have a classification and compensation study that provides us with information to see where there are the breaks in our pay plan and how our county classifications are comparing to our market. And then with this information, the organization can make decisions that support providing competitive salaries, a structure that's sustainable, and that will last with time and promote equity under Oregon Equal Pay. Probably relook at that as well. So in conjunction with the study, and this is maybe a little bit more exciting, as we create the job descriptions, that'll really support some of the underlying data, you know, again, as, as class comp is kind of that central feed of all of the information as it flows throughout HR, it'll really bolster some of the plans we have in the other work groups. And areas we'll focus on is capturing, you know, the minimum qualifications needed to do the job, as we spoke of, years of experience, education, physical requirements, and then that'll help us look to remove those arbitrary barriers for those, for any of those positions too, and it'll help us do a better job with ADA accommodations and light duty, you know, return to work plans for employees and those types of good things.
So Lisa, well, I'm very excited that this is being undertaken. My mind is exploding a little bit. Is this a, so I have a few. Smaller questions, I guess, to express. Because there's a larger need for understanding that I don't quite have yet. I'm wondering. How long is this work going to take to just examine all this stuff? Let alone unpack all the learnings and then rectifying. Or evolve them. And then I'm also thinking, wow. This is big. There's a lot of data to wade through and uh your team has a lot of work to do. Just supporting the existing organization. So I'm wondering, is this similar to how we've been approaching a lot of projects? Where you bring in some outside consultants and maybe some limited duration. Uh, employees that are able to dig into all the information and do this examination. While the organization continues to be successful with all the other HR work that needs to happen. So how are you going about this? And because ultimately what I'm assuming is for the board. As Angie may bring us um new policies that we need to adopt. And that, and there are rightful budget needs, right? Uh, so I'm wondering. Uh, is this like an ex-budget year thing? When's the shoe gonna drop? Somebody else who's raised, next year, a year out, years out?
Yes, and so I can answer that with uh some certainty and some uncertainty. Because yes, we are planning on bringing a vendor on board. And then, yes, we also have limited duration employees that are, we're currently training and getting up to speed on our, on our county. So they understand the work they do. Because they will be integral in, in, in supporting the vendor, uh, but also in supporting the Workday project too. So because this information is for both things really, especially with the job descriptions. Um, so the vendor, uh, we were drafting any, um, an RFP. Uh, to put out there as soon as we have some word on the budget because there is the funding behind the study that's required, right, for the vendor. And so that's the certainty part. Um, the uncertainty is in like how long for the study and the job descriptions. Um, because I'm, uh, part of the RFP is to ask for a recommendation from the vendor and how to go about this work. Like we're, we're putting the RFP out, like here's our challenges. This is what we're seeing. Bring forth the best way to engage in this work or at least some options.
Yeah.
That we can make a decision on. So I don't know if that will be, we're going to be working in tandem, creating job descriptions and doing the study, or do we need? Like good job descriptions first?
Upon ERP and the jail capacity study, two years, easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, but once we have the data, that's the important part, right, is to, let's get the job descriptions and get the data.
Yeah.
Um, but the data, the data is kind of relevant for a snapshot too, right? Because then it starts aging. And so there is some emphasis for us to, you know, start at least the decision-making as soon as we have, you know, data and some recommendations to bring forth. Um, but I think that the implementation then is the mul-, is really the multi-year.
Works smart. And I know you're going to be talking to a vendor, but I, instead of working across the board this way. Will most likely be business unit by business unit, or do you know?
And that's like, how, like, how do you? Yeah, we gotta, we gotta figure out how to. How to eat the elephant. Yeah, how do you eat the elephant? Yeah, definitely one piece at a time, but what parts first?
We need to hire people everywhere. We have retirements everywhere across the organization. And we have market retention challenges everywhere across the organization. So I want it everywhere. I want it done well. I want it done smartly and I want it done as swiftly as we can possibly manage.
Two points that I want to underpin is this does connect directly with the Workday implementation. Because the last thing we want is garbage in, garbage out.
Yeah.
And um departments um are really, they're looking forward to the class comp study. And I think we will have, yes, it's workload, but um good reception from departments with job descriptions. Because Lisa sharing the HR experience, it's challenging for departments not having clear job descriptions for a wide variety of reasons too. So um, I know um that CLT members have expressed appreciation that this work is moving, moving forward. Because what it also impacts is some of our recruitment and retention.
Yep.
Good night. And Tanya, I thought that a couple of years ago we had a pay equity.
Did. Acquired by the state.
Yeah, and so it seems that's, that's a part of this, but it's also, yeah.
It's a layer on. And um, we're having some challenges. Because it was layered on to a system that, or a system structure that's not updated.
Yeah, a twenty-year-old system.
Correct. So, so um. I can, you know, I can't speak to qualitative uh or quantitative information, just qualitative. We have lost um potential applicants because of that layering challenge. Um.
But it's not due to pay equity. It's due to the class and comp study.
It's the comp. Yeah. And so the, the classification compensation study, uh, it, it structures our pay plan. So what does any given position, like what are we going to pay it? And so that's like the first step sometimes that we're, that we lose candidates because we might be undermarketed or we're not paying what private industry is paying and they can get a job there. Um, and then when you overlay the pay equity, that's where do you place a particular candidate within that pay structure? And so that's the, kind of the second challenge sometimes is that there's not a lot of room for negotiation because of pay equity. Um, that's how you remove that, um, you know, institutional. Um, you know, discriminatory practices that could occur by, you know, certain, certain community and populations being able to negotiate a better salary. So pay equity serves to have a system that you get paid based on your experience and your knowledge, et cetera, right? It's supposed to be that unbiased approach. Um, but it also comes with some challenges as well because it's very restrictive. And then when you.
This is a part that you need to get done in your next four years.
I'd like to make two points. This is, this is well beyond.
Together. Sorry, we were, we were still finishing our conversation right here. Yes, I hear you.
Yeah, well beyond my time. But uh, two things, and your observations, it is challenging. Because your most talented and ambitious people are going to leave. And they're going to continue to leave in any, any organization, including on private side, doesn't really matter. Where they feel that there isn't some adjustment for their superior contributions. And that's, I, I don't know what that means, but it's really, really hard. So hopefully that, you can take a look at that in the future. The other thing is I advocated on clean water services side, uh, pay performance. And uh, why I did that years ago was because I believe that if you could quantify even in a government setting. You were doing something very different and special, that there would be some little bonus, if you would. Uh, it's worked very well for them and I would hope this well beyond your study, well into the future. But maybe you might take a peek over there and say, does that have some applicability? At some future date, some galaxy far away for, for, for you. Because I, I think that gets the first problem with the very talented people who are vicious, saying. I can go anywhere and you're not compensating me because I'm the best of class. And uh, that's in the mind of theirs and not necessarily ours, but you know, everybody has their own view of what they do and how to do it. So. Anyway, just a couple of observations.
Thank you. Anything more on class comp before I move on? We have two more business systems. Okay, so moving on to H, uh, HR business systems. Uh, this is the HR data resource hub for Washington County's people information, both operationally and administratively. And so the business systems group supports the timely processing, uh, the integrity of and reliability of the county's people and HR data. Uh, it ensures we're complying with laws, county rules and data privacy requirements. The team also maintains and innovates the various human resources information systems currently used to process and store people information. In partnership with uh our information technology services group. Um, enhancing the overall effectiveness of HR operations through efficient use of current HR technology. Looking forward to its future state, it will continue to focus on supporting the accurate and timely processing of all the people data. Uh, we're continuing to transition to digital workflow, workflow files, getting away from paper and even digital PDFs. Um, and we're uh directly supporting the transition to the new ERP system. And so when you see the lists and the updates that come forward to you and who's working on this project from HR, it's this team primarily. Um, and they're at least the, the project, the HR project um leads. Um, it's the manager I spoke of that will be onboarding soon. And then um another one of our analysts and then someone from the benefits team, since that's a really large part of the, of the Workday workflow as well. So um, getting into that connectivity to the greater organization. Um, currently, HR uses five human resources information systems uh to support its operations. And so we use, yeah, we use Wizard uh for, you know, general employee information. We have three modules of NeoGov that we're using. And so that's for applicant tracking, onboarding and the learning management system where we push out the learning. Uh, we use Origami to help track like our employee labor relations, all the files. Um, record keeping of all the complaints that come in and different, you know, performance um, uh, assistance that we provide to managers. And then Absent Soft, we, we're farming that out and outsourcing that to a vendor. It's all of our protective leave administration. Uh, we brought that back in-house and so we administer that and that's the software that supports it. And then Laserfish is that digital file and uh file storage for um the personnel files. And so all that information is uh across five different um softwares. And uh then you can kind of pull in Questica for budget because the information comes out of Wizard, right, goes in, into. And while that's more budget, it does have some overlap with HR for position control and personnel costing. Um, as we look forward to taking the county to the next level of HR excellence with the implementation of Workday. It's an integrated system with a single source of truth for data. And for HR business systems, that is key. Uh, because an integrated system means that all HR functions will be supported in a singular system with the same information. All drawing on the same information. And the workflow is in real time across all functions. And so when we look at the employee lifecycle of an employee, the recruiting module will support like the application submission, tracking, uh, selection process. And as an employee goes from pre-hire to new hire, it transitions seamlessly within the, hopefully seamlessly within the system. And then uh moves on to performance management in there, right? Their job descriptions in there has their job functions. But then you can set goals, you can offer feedback within the system to employees. Makes it easier for when performance evaluation time comes. Uh, you can develop a learning and development plan for an employee, to support succession planning and other important initiatives. And from an employer choice um perspective, you have a dashboard with total compensation graphics. Like it's not just salary, but what, what are your benefits being provided, the value of that, your, your leave and your time off. Um, employees will have a lot of self-service options. They can change elections and their deferred comp. Right now, you know, you have to kind of go through one system to get into another. Uh, you could, they can look at their pay slips, see in real time what their vacation and leave banks are, and then when their upcoming requests are. Approvals route through it. It's just, it has so much. And so we have five systems right now that support a portion of those functions. Some of them actually aren't even automated yet. So with respect to data, that single source, source of truth increases our data quality and credibility. So when an organization doesn't have a single source of truth for data, it creates like these information silos. Um, and for data that's supposed to be shared across the county, uh, that can create some um challenges with data integrity. Uh, so we're really excited because our performance, salary, position, history, all of that will be in, uh, in there for managers and HR both.
Thank you for that because I, that was one of my questions was, how's Workday going to benefit you? And so you just went through that. That's great. Sorry, sure, go ahead.
No, no, just, I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to ask questions with this. So with the, this sketch you might not have been in the room for.
Oh, right.
But all your colleagues were. Um, the last line has the ERP process. Uh, so you have all kinds of different current HR systems with all kinds of data. Class and comp wise, we know that's out of date data, but it's, it is the data. So that whole transformation will take through the end of calendar year twenty-five. So when you talk about having additional uh future state. Including with class and comp, that I assume will come after.
Yeah, and that's a great question. And that's some of the things we've been talking about currently. Because we're in, we're in that strategy stage of the ERP project. And so uh our class comp manager, Cassandra Ollier, had been pulled in as the subject matter expert. And we were kind of wrestling with that question because we don't have the data now that we want in Workday.
Right.
Um, so what we're doing is what's first and foremost is to, is to configure the system in a way that we would like.
To migrate.
Yeah, migrate too. And then the data comes later. And even if, let's say, we have project timeline delays and we have to put in our current data, okay, right? But it can be changed. That's the one thing. It might not be easy, um, but it can be done. And so the important thing is let's just build the system that's going to work in a future state that we would like to.
So for me, it will be a back to class comp particularly. It, it's, I, I, at some point, uh, I would like. To get clarity after you've got your class comp consultant on board. And a better understanding of how long that work's going to take. Because for me, it, as a commissioner, my only need is to understand. The learnings there and how it will impact our budget, our financial forecasting. That's all.
Other questions on business systems?
Just that you might uh make sure when you have blockchain technology so that people can't change dates and. People will know that that's an update. It's a, it's a tough auditing process, but it's, it's internal audit process as well. So hopefully, yeah.
All right, our last one. So risk management. And so risk management is a division with HR, within HR. Many of its functions dovetail into traditional human resources oversight, such as overseeing the administration of workers' compensation claims. The team also plays an integral part of safeguarding employee well-being through safety programming. But risk management also has very different functions, such as procuring and maintaining all of the property casualty and workers' compensation lines of insurance for the county. It adjusts all property and liability claims and they support departments in identifying risk and developing risk mitigation and transfer strategies. And so in looking forward to the future state of risk management, it has a lot of core functions that don't change with time. So the purchasing of insurance, you know, doesn't really change much over the years. Um, we are though with insurance having increasing costs. Uh, it's a nationwide trend again, not unique to the county. Uh, spoke a little bit about this at the Budget Committee meeting and we're finding ways to still adequately protect um the county's assets, but minimize the cost to do so. Where I do see areas of opportunity though is in our data tracking and trend analysis. We'd like to develop a baseline. Um, you know, uh, data source and then track, track, track trends over time. Examine the story that's being told by the data and then determine whether we have any risk techniques that we can employ. So this goes not only on like the liability claim, like are we seeing more auto accidents? What kind are they? What are the causes? You know, kind of root cause analysis, but also within the workers' comp um aspect too. And then interestingly, we're looking at how we can infuse equity into risk management. When you think about buying insurance and administering claims, like how does equity come into that? Um, and so having clear processes and applying them consistently, consistently removes the potential for intrinsic bias. And so with respect to developing risk management strategies, we're ensuring that departments and employees are being heard and valued in their decision-making on risk management matters. Fostering that innovation by creating creative solutions through collaboration with them and likely leading to better outcomes with mitigating risk more effectively. And hopefully uh leading to cost savings as well. And so with connections to the greater organizational objectives. We're examining how to investigate and uh preserve evidence and partnering with county council more. And uh our claims management and hopefully to improve eventual outcomes. Our objective is to better posture the city for def. Our objective is to better posture the city for defense. And we're also reviewing our position regarding some of our vendor contracts, looking for areas to tender opportunities based on contractual obligations. And we're planning to have more strategic meetings, regular claims reviews for both regular, for both workers' compensation and liability claims with county stakeholders to provide a common understanding of the, you know, claims activity, the trends, the financial impacts and to help strategize on the more larger and complex claims. We're looking how we can infuse human-centered approaches into, to risk management practices. We intend to explore further the concept of claims advocacy with respect to managing workers' comp claims. And so this is where we're ensuring the employee understands the process, which can be very confusing at times and during a stressful time. And it views claims management through an empathetic lens where we balance both our need to apply our claims management consistently. But also in accordance with applicable laws and regulations, there's that compliance piece. But ensuring employees are getting what they need to heal and get back to work. And so there's that people element as well.
I have a couple of questions about this, but so we're going through a phase where we're making up for lost time, so to speak. Where there, well, we have four critical facilities. Make it up for lost time in terms of that major construction. Then we have misstep road projects. And with doing the full faith and credit and inline three F, we may have more projects of, an increase of projects and then a studying out. And then hopefully in future years, we'll be building an expanded jail and or community corrections center through that study. So if someone gets hurt, we contract out for the building of all of these to building firms. And if one of the workers gets hurt, then is that on the contracted firm? Or does that increase our risk?
It depends on how the insurance is set up in the construction contract. From what I've been seeing so far, the type of arrangements that the county enters into is that the contractor hires and through their subcontractors hire and we, employees, their employees to work on the project. And then there's contractual terms that state that they will insure them at various levels and have the different lines of insurance for that purpose. So in context of your example, it would be on the contractor.
So if, but if those subcontractors are withholding wages, which is somewhat far, I don't want to say it's common, but it happens. And so Oley often gets involved there. Is there something we need to do in how we put, how we define our contracts? So that it will help mitigate that practice?
Yes, and that's where you're speaking to like risk transference or risk mitigation terms in contracts. And so limits of liability indemnification clauses, things where you're passing the liability back to the contractor. And so those are the types of things that we are looking at and working with county council on with the contracts. I don't have answers as to where there might be some weaknesses. I think we've, you know, identified one with a vendor where, where we have shared liability that our contracts might not be identifying what that liability split is. And so then it's, those conversations are happening after a claim is in our lap. And so, you know, where, where can we, where can we bake some things into a contract ahead of time? So at least there's clarity of what our obligation would be.
This is just helping me appreciate the work that risk handles. Then the other, I'm not looking to know more set policy or anything like that, but just appreciating. So when we're talking about class and comp and the ad hoc and how in some cases, maybe because of budget, employees are working harder. They're working on more complex things and whatnot. It gets me thinking about their holistic health and their mental health. And, you know, it can be really hard to both want the work to get done and to support employees taking their weekends off, their time off. You know, it's just like with, with the jail deputies and, and the community corrections center and required overtime or shift coverage. So I am assuming that one aspect of claims and risk that you have to handle as part of risk is the stress and strain. We're putting certain work, workers under within our agency and trying to have some oversight of that, I guess. Where did, where does that happen in the organization, Ms. Angie?
So that's, that's a really complex actually question, I think.
And it may be a question for another time, but.
I'll speak to a couple prompts. The transition to Canopy has, has been really important because that has bolstered up our, our mental health, behavioral health support for employees. We were going through some really challenging points. And some of it is just general workforce shortages within that field and giving employees access. I want to commend Lisa and Debbie. We recently had a situation where we had to support an employee finding resources outside of that field. And so between Lisa and Debbie, they provided those resources to that employee. So I think creating that human-centered approach and just Debbie and her team being accessible to employees is, is really important. So employees know that they matter, their issues are real and not having just one solution. I think as an organization, we need to continue to provide the, the, the environment for, to say, employees to stop doing things. We don't have the workforce to continue to do all the things we've done before. So giving that permission to actually stop doing activities is incredibly important moving forward. And then, and you brought up the jail, really addressing where there's stress and strain. And we do have mandated services with, with case counts. And that we, we have to continue to watch. And that does mean that it's shifting where investments occur within the county with our limited resources. But it's also giving that permission to stop doing things, which is really hard for employees that are committed to public service because they're seeing the community need, they're seeing case needs. And that permission has to come from us, you know, in this room.
So Ms. Angie and I have had this conversation many times and I've whiteboarded things many times. And I'm like, so this is the list of things that we stop doing, right? And, and helping ensure that the employees have sightlines into that versus just feeling like we're piling on and piling on and piling on.
And their supervisors and their managers.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So.
Yeah. And that's.
Wrapping all of this up.
Yeah.
Wow, I mean, I, I'll just start kickoff the wrap-up process with my colleagues. I, we made a choice with Ms. Angie and her, her organizational structure to up-level HR. Gone are the days where the HR function is just very deep in the organization. Rather, a clear recognition that our workforce is our biggest asset in functioning as a public service local government. And that we are committed to fostering a workforce and an exciting workplace in service to our community. And I'm really pleased with the assessment that you've done of our current state and working towards better improved future states. And really welcome that and I'm grateful for it. So colleagues.
I a hundred percent agree. And I also, for me personally, what you provided me today with is a transparent look at what's happening in HR and how, how it matches up with, with our vision and our values. And to me, that's really important. Trying to not be negative here. When I look backward, I, I just didn't understand so many, so many different things. And would have questions that had oblique answers that I think in the large part were related to structure and other pieces. So I know that you have hit the ground running as fast as you can. And I've had the opportunity to work with you on some individual projects. I just want to express my appreciation for the knowledge, the experience that you bring us here. And if we use that term modernization again, it's basically modernizing our HR function. We've got a ways to go, but it's a, it's a critical component. And I think from the board, you'll hear that it's, it's very much respective to work that's going on. So thank you for, for what you've done. It's a big change.
Anything else?
No, this is a great report. We needed this. So yeah, thanks for your work on this. It's very good.
You're welcome. Great, thank you. And I just want to appreciate your time today. Had, I was worried to be too much, but I'm like, there's things I think they would want to know. Yeah, because.
You were right.
Yeah, and also, you know, appreciate county administrator's support in this and you as well. I, I really am truly, I'm like rolling on eight months here. And, you know, it's that first year, it's important to somebody, right? We were talking about onboarding and so thus far, I feel like I've been really brought in with the executive leadership team, my own team. You know, county, county leadership team and then you all with supporting of this work. And as you'll recall, I vetted it as I was coming in, hoping that there was like action behind the words. And so I'm definitely feeling that and very grateful.
Terrific. Thank you, Lisa. So colleagues, if we could pull out the roundtable rollout plan that's in your packet. So looking ahead, while July may seem far away, it's not actually that far away. We have a roundtable on our calendars for Thursday, July 11th. Then Friday, July 19th, we have a CWS learning day. We will not be having a rolling, a rolling, a roundtable in August. And then we hit the ground running September 12th. And we will have some pretty big things to, to do between September, October, November and December. So these, what we focus on really has some flex. We know in the July roundtable, we usually use that time to reflect upon our budget process. So please come prepared with that, what worked well and what you would like to consider changing for the next future year. We've done, I think, I'm not going to be hitting you with another one of these. I'm looking at the BCC 2024 work plans, Q3 walkthrough. We may, in one of these, not necessarily July, but probably by September, will want to spend some time looking at the rolling agenda through the end of the year. So I'll write that down. So Ms. Angie, Danny and I will work on some clarity there so that we're able to make the most of the limited time that this tells us we have. And the very, very big projects that we have. At this juncture, I'm not sure what other topics we'll have for July 11th. I still need to nail down both with government relations on the board training day on lobbying. Oh darn it, I skipped right over something for our agenda today and I need to come back to it. And then we previously thought about having a legal training day before the end of the year. But we know with new formation, we'll need to form up as a new board together. So I'll get clarity on that. And yeah, just have a lot of work to do. So. Let me go back to today's agenda, come back to the item that I skipped right over. Put my agenda here. It's, I'm going to use the pile. Okay, under item two, we went over the availability, the big topics. Ah, yes, BCC positions one voice. So let me, let me kickstart this conversation with, we have, we have a new session that's coming up in 25. And our government relations team is doing a lot of work with us to try to tee up what we have for a new session. We also know that it, we're going to have a new, with the 25 session, there's going to be a new transportation bill, right? I know I've been through multiple transportation bills as a metro counselor. And so it's really important that when the board has a position that our board liaisons actually represent that position. So I want to give some, I want to plant a seed in your brain that as you have conversations with our GR team about the, the way the process will work through the legislature, especially on a new transportation bill. How do we make sure that the Washington County interests are represented? Not just in that bill, but through the session. And I think we need to come back to this in our July roundtable. So and making sure that we are set up for success. So I wanted to plant the seed there, reinforce our expectation that the board position always gets represented. You know, we are independently elected officials, but we've been doing the work to form up board positions. So that gets articulated fully first. And if you, as our board liaison, happen to be a different position, that's individual and secondary. So, yeah.
So with that, yeah, I think that's a, a good point. There is a letter in the packet that.
Oh, the tomorrow.
For tomorrow's packet, that's a little bit leaning in that direction. So if you have any questions about that letter, please. If you want real information, talk to Jessica. If you want surface information, talk to me. But, but if you have any issues with that letter, please let us.
I don't have any issues with the letter. I just had a need to add additional voice. So maybe I, if.
Yeah.
You're in right after this. I left my packet upstairs. Sorry.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that's the first step to, towards exactly what you're talking about, communicating a clear message to our legislators about our expectations or desires, I guess, for the 25 transportation bill. Cause there's going to be a lot of stuff in that. We've got a, got an ODOT that is. We've got a, got an ODOT that is underwater and we've we've got to fix that. Anyway, lots of lots of conversations. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Okay, anything else that maybe we should have talked about that didn't get written down on the, the pieces of paper, so I wasn't tracking it?
No, I think this is really great. I think just even though it is it is kind of overwhelming when you look at it, it's good to have that. So I put that in in my packet so I can refer back to this. We do have a lot of work to do.
I really thought there might be more questioning why this is here, there, everywhere. So I didn't expect to see that through so fast.
Well, it's a little bit, you know, again, it's like Lisa said, we're going to eat the elephant. We just got to know where we're going to take the first bite. And that's a little bit this, there's a lot of stuff in this. So it was very good to get a refresh and at the same time, understand where we are going to but need to be focusing our attention. But yeah, with that, I, again, just want to say to Lisa, thank you very much. You put a lot of work into that, and it was very good to see that. So thank you. I'll have a couple of thoughts for you on the letter tomorrow. Okay. All right.
Why don't the two of you talk about that first? I'm around the rest of the afternoon, so even if it has to be a phone call, I'll be.
Okay. Maida, would you print that draft letter for me real quick?
So I hope it worked well today that, you know, we, when we schedule a roundtable, we initially schedule it for the whole day. But then as the agenda refinement goes out, proactively just shorten it up. So and I think today has, today's experience has helped me. You know, I've tried to analyze things every which way and sideways so that then I just try to lay it out a lot more straightforward. So it, since I've spent so much time looking at it and forming it, I tend to think, oh, it's going to take us longer to comprehend, but no, not so much.
So I I have a question, and I don't know where this document goes past here. And what I'm asking is.
Which document?
The the one that we're just talking about, the biggest, the biggest one, yes.
The biggest one.
Is that, do you share that with the executive leadership team? And do you discuss it? Because I think I'd like to hear feedback as well from staff and relationship.
So the roundtable packets are public, so I can, we have talked about it at executive leadership team. There's no surprises on that, on that document. So there's not.
All right.
I don't put this together.
I know, I know you don't.
I go over this with them.
So.
I know you.
I think there would be a different set of feedback if we had new initiatives added to the list. Because, so to me, this is clarity of the commitments that are already on the, and laying them out into a process that goes beyond just one calendar year.
Starts the project management.
And we're going to buy a no vacancies site. That means no new rocks.
Don't look for them, Jerry. Fall from the sky.
Or for those, those who might want to be idea generators, we don't have the capacity. We have to clear the decks first. So this is us being mindful of the path that we're on with our senior leadership team and making sure that we are engaged so that we can provide the level of input, feedback, direction, and decision-making that they need from us. Yeah.
Right, and so far.
Are we doing ACAs? We got a delayed thumbs up. And how about you, Marty? Okay. And where's Ann? Oh, Ann's out of the room. Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say that our small table meetings have resumed today at four o'clock. And two meetings scheduled for the council first trust sizes in the next couple of weeks. So that has accelerated. So far, it hasn't conflicted with anything.
Awesome. Great. Well, we have a big day coming up, June 18th, but it's adoption day. Cool. All right. Well, we'll see you back here tomorrow morning. We're adjourned. Thank you.